I don't want to steal anybody's thunder from the end of the meeting, but I did get a report from Lieutenant Thompson that Halloween in the harbor this year was probably one of the best ones they ever had. The weather was great, the place was mobbed, but people could not have been more cordial, acting appropriately. And the police department reports there were no incidents whatsoever. So, they were stationed, they had two sergeant and lieutenant down there. It was just a great night for everybody. So, I know you might want to talk about that later, but, you know, it was a great event for our police officers. So, that's all I have.
John, you and I were down there, you want to...
Yeah, I have to tell you, you know, between the Chamber of Commerce and the merchants, it was the largest I've ever seen in the 10-plus years that I've been going down. Weather was great, the fact that it's, you know, daylight savings doesn't take place until the day after. I think there are a lot of people, some people are saying they're from out of town, so it's a great opportunity to bring in business or for people to come down. But, you know, it makes this town, I know there are certain events that make, or define the town, and this is one of them. You can take a look at whether it's St. Patrick's Day, or whether it's Santa coming off the boat, or whether you're dealing with Heritage Days. This is one of them, and it's such a fun little event because not only are the kids all dressed up, even the parents get dressed up. And one of the ones that my wife flipped out about was, there was probably a toddler, maybe 18 months old, and he was dressed as James Bond in his little tyke thing. It said "Bond" in his little tyke machine. It was just really cute. And then there was another one that was a baby and it looked like it was Cabbage Patch doll. They had the old Cabbage Patch, this huge box, and the baby was in the middle of it, and I just thought to myself, "Very clever." So, it's too bad it's so short because it happened so quickly and it's just, you know, you're gone. But, again, I just think it's a great effort between the town working with those entities to make sure that we can do it and continue to do it. We should, because it does define your town. And what a great way of looking at it as opposed to some of the negative things we hear about our town on a regular basis. So, that was my turn.
Yeah, I thought it was great as well. I want to thank all the merchants, because they really dole out a lot of candy. The toy store, the Burks give out gifts and books, and it's, you know, it's quite an event for a lot of them. One thing I did here that I wanted to add is I heard that in some magazine or newspaper, we're actually ranked in the top 10 as places to go for Halloween. So, we've actually gotten recognition. I think that may have drawn some people to the event, too. So, it's a great event. And I saw Kenny Bates there and some of the other officers, and they did a great job keeping the streets safe.
And Fire Department, they were there.
So, do we, anyone on the list of things that Tricia puts after her agenda there? One thing that I saw that I wanted to bring up is the GATRA update. Is that, are you...
He was actually slated for this meeting tonight. He's recuperating from a back injury, so I expect he'll be on the next meeting agenda.
Okay, great. I see the sloop still running, so...
Still running.
Right.
Police ride it.
Yeah, I know. It's a great idea, but it doesn't seem to be getting the use that we had hoped. Anything else on here anyone wants to talk about? If not, then we will move on. The next item on the agenda is, what is this?
Public hearing?
Oh, the favorable residential factor, so, classification hearing. So, great. Board of assessors.
Steve Todd, Steve, gentlemen. Steve, Steve Todd.
Good evening, everyone. This is Steve Gard from the Board of Assessors, Todd Gloack, and we all know Steve Jasmin Bausch, our town assessor. This is the time of year when the Board of Assessors brings to the Board of Selectmen their recommendation to have either a single tax rate or a split tax rate. Once again, this year, the Board of Assessors voted unanimously for a single tax rate factor of one. You may recall from last year, years in the past, the data assessment for whether or not we have a split tax rate or a higher tax rate for the commercial component of our community is broken down for you with a sheet that was provided entitled Fiscal Year 2016 Tax Rate Shift. The numbers are very similar to what they were last year with respect to the shifting of the burden. For example, a 5% tax shift would save the residential taxpayer whopping $16, but burden the commercial taxpayer $495. So, it's the board's position, very consistent with what took place on Halloween, that it would be better for the town to have a single tax rate rather than try to burden those merchants who are, you know, doing such a great job and trying to keep their businesses going. We are not like many of the surrounding communities in that we do not have a large commercial base. We are still at 95% residential and 5% commercial. There is also a sheet in your packet that identifies the surrounding towns and their different residential versus commercial real estate split. We are number two, Ducksbury being number one at 96 and 4. So, once again, the Board of Assessors recommends unanimously that the Board of Selectmen vote a single tax rate for fiscal year 2016.
All right, thanks, Steve. You guys have anything to add, or...
Just a quick question, maybe towards Steve. At one point, were we at 94, and have we gone down a percent to 95?
Around 95. It may have been a little lower, or higher.
A higher, okay.
It's been approximately 5%.
The only thing I'd note is that, again, the commercial base that we have aren't big, large department stores and big, large entities. Our commercial base are small business owners. So, where you think, you know, Kmart could take a hit of $500, but, you know, the small coffee shop around the corner, it has a big impact to them. So, I know we vote this every year and have the same discussion every year. Any, nothing else to add?
I have nothing to add, no, I agree.
Great.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the residential factor according to MGL Chapter 58, Section 1A.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dave. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous, 5 to 0. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It doesn't make any sense. But you need to look at it every year, anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Steve, what happened?
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to keep up with you.
So, you're ahead of your advertised public hearing at 7:20. I might suggest that Mr. Cafferty come in under your 8:15 item.
I'm sure.
Yeah, the police are here, so.
Or if Kevin's here, is Kevin in here?
Yeah, Nancy just went to get him.
I was thinking Kevin Kelly.
Kevin Kelly is not here.
It makes sense if anything else...
It will probably take, well, he's here, but that will take, might take a little longer than 10 minutes, but it may not. Your pleasure.
Kevin, how are you?
Great.
So, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, so we're going to move forward to the 8:15 item, which is to discuss the intersection of Arbor Way and Aberdeen.
Excellent.
Are the police...
Are they coming with you? Are they going to be with you?
They are over there, and I actually thought it was the relocation drain easement. I didn't realize.
Yes, the 8:15.
Yep. 8:15 is the Arbor Way and Aberdeen stop signs.
They're here already, so.
Yep, they're here. They're on their way over.
Where do you want to do the easement?
We can do both.
They're here now. They're literally here.
We'll start with the street. How are you? Evening.
Everybody.
Yeah, sure. So, this really kind of goes back a couple of years. That we've been in contact and working with the folks at Cushing School to try to address some of the traffic and safety concerns there. And really, over the past few months, neighbors in the area got together and brought it to the police attention, and then we've been going through traffic rules to try to address traffic safety in the area in general. So, over the course of the past several months, there have been a number of changes that have been implemented with the assistance of the Highway Department, to try to get some better signage, cut back some trees, do some basic things that we can do. But, one thing that kept coming up repeatedly was the intersection of Arbor Way and Aberdeen. It's a four-way intersection. Right now, it's got a two-way stop there, but it's a little bit awkward and strange in that people expected it might be a four-way, some people know, some people don't, and we just keep hearing feedback that there's a lot of confusion. So, in looking at it, kind of came to the conclusion through traffic rules that it might be a good idea to make that a four-way stop with all the pedestrian traffic that's up there because of the schools, the potential for people doing cut-through to go through the neighborhood to get up to Route 3A. It seemed like it's in the best interest of everybody if that went to a four-way stop. So, there's an executive action put forth that would do that. As it stands right now, and we have some maps for clarification if it would help, Arbor Way right now coming up from Countryway, so if you're westbound off of Countryway, is stopped, and if you're headed eastbound, Arbor Way towards Countryway is stopped. However, Aberdeen Drive is not stopped in either direction. So, it's a little bit almost opposite of what you would anticipate in that if you were coming off of Countryway towards 3A, you would think that that would be the right of way.
It's tough to anticipate.
But similarly, Arbor Way does loop all the way around its continuous. So, as indicated on this map that Officer Billings is passing out, the two red stop signs right now are what are existing. The orange is what would be proposed, that we would be looking to make a change to the traffic rules.
Great idea.
So, our, the executive action that we put forth would be to amend traffic schedules so that that stop would be happening on Aberdeen Drive, and then make the request that the Highway Department would go out and install the proper signage.
I support it heartily. I'm obviously very attuned to four-way stops, living on one, and my kids went to school in the Cushing neighborhood, and there is a lot of traffic there of going in and out, so I...
It's a tough anticipation.
It's a great solution, yeah, it's...
I go down that road quite often.
So, no questions, just...
Does that make sense to me? I'm interested in hearing from any neighbors if there are people out there.
Is there anyone in the audience that lives in the neighborhood?
No.
Great.
Move to have the Engineering Department install the appropriate signage and line painting, and have the town of Situate traffic schedule reflect Aberdeen Drive traffic come to a stop in an easterly direction at Arbor Way, and to have Aberdeen Drive traffic stop in a westerly direction at Arbor Way, thus making the intersection of Arbor Way and Aberdeen Drive a four-way stop.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Can I ask a quick question while you guys are here? I got a call, I think it was over the weekend. Kingsway and I think it's Woodland, there's actually a stop line, but there's no stop sign. Do you know anything about that? I actually saw it this morning at the drive.
Look it up in the traffic rules manual.
It's a solid, beautiful-looking line, probably the nicest one we have in town, and there's no stop sign. So, I just, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll check the schedule to make sure it's actually on the books, and if it is...
We could have the sign.
Get a sign.
I meant to ask you earlier, I forgot.
It might have been taken down when they were doing the work.
I don't remember a stop sign ever being there, but...
But a nice stop sign.
You did pave that area.
Yes, yeah, you did pave that recently, so. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got a couple more minutes. Why don't we do the...
Might take a little longer.
Drain easement?
The easement. It will take longer than your one minute that you're supposed to have your public hearing.
Okay.
Anybody got any music?
I got Kevin.
Any music?
Yeah, you want a joke? No, we can get situated for that. So, we've got a public hearing, a discussion vote on a liquor license application. The clock, I think, is a little slow, so we can get underway. There's a liquor license that is, I guess we are a little... Is everybody, Tricia, do I have to wait till that time?
7:16 right now.
What's the time?
7:16.
Are you using that clock? I'm using that clock, I'm sorry.
Well, that's off by an hour.
We'll use that clock.
Not, well, I was using the second...
Well, pass.
Never mind, I'm not even going to try.
All right.
I have 7:16.
Put along 24 hours. Okay, so, nuts and bolts, but are, there's a liquor license that is, has been extinguished and returned back to the town, and is the full, what do they call it, full license, full beer, wine, alcohol license. And about a month ago, we talked about a policy and approved a policy of how we're going to handle liquor license and the ability to hand them out in the town, and that policy has been here and is posted. And I think there's two parties that have applied for the license, and I think what we'll do is we'll have both parties come up, tell us what your thoughts and what your plans are, and what you, why you want the license and why you should get it, and then we'll have a discussion and see how we go. So, why don't we start with...
Do you want to bring them both up simultaneously?
No, I would do it separately.
Nah, let's just do one at a time. How about, first on the list is Sand Hills General Store.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Frank Colepoise. I'm an attorney, and I'm here representing Sand Hills General Store. With me this evening is a person you know, Dan McAdam. He is the manager of Sand Hills General Store LLC and the owner of that, and runs the store down there. And as you said, Tony, we're here with respect to the full liquor license available. As you know, we've been before this board a number of times previously. The Sand Hills General Store currently is the holder of a seasonal beer and wine license. We have, we obtained permission for you to have it under the maximum amount of time allowed under the statute, and that is from April 1st to January 15th in every year, and not allowed to sell from the 16th through the end of March. The seasonal beer and wine license has been extremely helpful to Sand Hills General Store. As you know, even they've done a lot of things down at that store. Business has been good. I think it's been great for the community, but the license has helped quite a bit in terms of making the difference. It's tough, especially in the off-season, to generate income there, and we're looking for every opportunity to do it. And also, as I think you probably know, in the two years we've had that license, there's been no issues whatsoever down at Sand Hills General Store. The state-of-the-art ID identification for licenses, and there's been no issues whatsoever. Everything has gone completely smoothly. The ultimate goal of Sand Hills General Store is to have a beer and wine license for all 12 months. That's kind of the primary goal here that they seek. It's, it helps the store, it would help the community that's looking for it. It's difficult to shut it off for those 75 days, and it doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense if everything's going fine for those, the period that we have it. However, we understand that up until this point in time, that was the only option because we only have a seasonal license. So, the first goal would be if you happen to vote favorably for Stillwater Wine and Gourmet this evening, if you happen to do that, then their full-year beer and wine license would become available to the town, and presumably that would be at another hearing date. We would apply for that and would hope that this board would act favorably based on the history of Sand Hills General Store. However, if the board, for whatever reason, declines the application of Stillwater, we'd be looking for that full license, and that would permit Sand Hills General Store to sell beer and wine under that license for all 12 months, so we would accomplish our goal. It would also obviously give the opportunity to sell potentially other liquor besides beer and wine down there. And there's no intention that Sand Hills General Store turns into a package store exclusively or even offering a complete amount of liquor, but they may, if they have that license, do some limited liquor sales depending on what the needs of the customers seem to be. So, we would be able to accomplish our goal if that license is available, and we really feel we meet the criteria of the board that you voted on. We have the license now. Those criteria, I think we went over, and even though you adopted it as policy, I think that was your, the way you reflected your votes back when we got the beer and wine license. The statutory requirements of the service of the public need, no other establishments in close proximity, and protection of the common good. The other things like the parking, noise, traffic, it'd be the same establishment that you voted favorably in the past. So, basically, you know, we'll open it up to any questions, but that's our approach. If we can get the beer and wine all year round, that'll be fine, but there may be reasons why you don't vote for the other applicant this evening, in which case we would look for that because then we can accomplish our goals. And we think that Sand Hills is worthy of it under your criteria. And so, that's just, in general, what we're looking for this evening, and we'd open up to any questions, or if Dan has anything to add, he certainly can supplement what I've said this evening.
I don't have a lot to add, but what you were saying about if for some reason the other applicant is denied the license, I would really like to get, have the opportunity to get the full license. I am approved for a full license. I have another business with a full license. When this came up, we were always kind of looking for the beer and wine, but when this came up a month ago, that this one was available, we didn't know if there was going to be another applicant, maybe we were the only one. So, what I did is I kind of talked to the community down there, because I know a lot of yous have been down there, but it's really a community, family store. And a lot of what is in that store now and what we're selling is what that community wants. So, I had asked the community, I said, "What do you just think? Anybody have any ideas on this?" And everybody was, their main idea was, "We want to keep this store. Dan, if it helps the store, fine. If you run it like you've been running it, I can see there's no problems because there's no problems with kids, there's no trouble, there's no police calls, there hasn't been one. There's been no issues," so the community is really supportive. They do not want to lose that store. And right now, the store is still kind of on the ball. I mean, I've invested a lot back into it. I'm really happy with how the community feels about the store. They love the place. They're really happy with it. It's a, it's a different store than it was there in the past. It's a real family store. I don't know if you've been down there. We're doing breakfast now, and we're bringing in a lot of things. The beer and wine, the alcohol, that's just another one, but there's a lot of other stuff we've brought in just to try to bring people in, and it's working. But, anything that would help. So, that's why I just want to, the main goal is to keep it safe down there. There's going to be no trouble. So, either way, if it doesn't work out one way, if it like to work out the other way, it gives us the opportunity to try it. So, that's all I have to say. If anybody has any questions.
Discussion for the board? Well, I'll say, I'll start off. I mean, I think initially when we gave you the license a couple of years ago, I was a little bit reluctant just because I was worried about the area and all the kids down there. And I've been down there, and I've known a number of people that go down there, and I've heard nothing but good things. So, you've done a great job with the establishment, like you said, turning it around, turning it into more full function, and I don't think that the beer and wine license has really impacted it at all. So, you know, thank you for doing that in such a great way. You know, in terms of the criteria here, you do meet a lot of the needs of the criteria as well, so it's clearly not a crazy decision to make if we were to award it to you. You know, you are further away from the harbor, so that there is a distance in terms of meeting the public's need. So, those are the things that stood out for me. Any, anything else?
No, I was just going to say more of the same, just what Tony had said.
Great. Thanks for coming in, and if it happens that we don't offer you this full license and another license comes available, we'll get you on the docket and get you out in here again to discuss that.
Thank you.
And the second applicant is Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good.
I'm Tracy Colomeco. I'm the owner of Stillwater's Wine and Gourmet. I've been in business, it was two years as of August. So far, successful. It's going well. Certainly happy to be part of the community and learning more and more about North Situate and all the other merchants in that area as we go along. For me, what I'm looking for in this license is basically growth. So, right now, it's great. I have a good customer base. It's growing every day, but unfortunately, a lot of times I have to turn people away because I don't have the full liquor. And so, they come in looking for spirits, they're going, some of them out of town, they're coming in for a wedding, and I either send them to Curtis Liquors in Cohasset or somewhere else in Situate. So, it would be great for my growth to be able to offer the full span of liquor, sort of that one-stop shop. Also, it's my primary source of income. So, I do have gift baskets and accessories and small little things, but the alcohol is my primary source, so anything I can do to help grow that, to make my business more successful, is great. I'm also looking to expand the store, so right now I have about 600 or 700 square feet, and I'm rearranging and taking down some walls to expand up to 1,200 square feet. So, I'll have more space, so I'll be able to bring in more product. I'm also putting in a security system and some other things to make that space more fit well with the business. So, trying to think what else. Haven't had any trouble. People seem to be happy. Everything I've heard is good so far, so hopefully I can continue to grow.
Tell us a little bit, so what are you selling mostly right now? Is it mostly wine? Is that...
It's mostly wine. I expanded recently my craft beer section, but I would say I'm 80% wine, 20% beer. Expanded it in August, so it's still a little early to tell.
Right, and your clientele is mostly?
Mostly parents, between 40 and 60, I would say, is my main, is probably 90% of my clientele.
This guy's age.
I'm there quite often.
He did.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because as clientele, when you start serving liquor, I think it may change a little bit in terms of the people coming in there and...
It could. And if that is the case, I'm also looking to put in one of those, I don't even know what it's called, but the scanner.
The ID scanner.
ID scanner. We also, we're all tip certified. We haven't had any problems yet. It's definitely an area of more, it's more family-oriented. I don't, I don't see a lot of underage, well, I certainly don't see underage, but I don't see a lot of younger people coming in unless they're three or four years old.
Good.
Tracy, what do you have now if minor, what safeguards do you have in place now? Did you just look at their license? I don't know a lot about the business, but what I'm getting at is I did get onto Sand Hills, and when we first issued him the seasonal license, and he took my license and put it on this machine and blew it up like this big, and it was just so easy, approve or disapprove, and just takes all the guesswork out of it. And that might be expensive, I don't know. So, is the alternative just to look at a person's license? Is that what you do now?
Right, that's what we do now. If I was to expand, I would get that machine because if I bring it, if that does bring in more people, certainly want to make sure we're creating the proper environment.
More?
Tracy, I think you have a great store, and I think for North Situate, it's really important for us to grow the economic development in that village, and I think this is a great way to do that. I would, though, really like to make sure that you do get that machine to move it, if we do approve, to move it to a full liquor. Your store is more of a gourmet store, which I think just fits so well into North Situate, and I personally, you know, just, I think we have plenty of liquor down on Front Street. I think Front Street is booming. I don't think we need any more liquor down in that area, and I think if we can transfer Tracy's to Sand Hills and give him a full-time beer and wine, it'll help him for those 75 days. So, we're helping two businesses by making this move. So, I would support moving the license to Tracy's business in North Situate for that reason.
Is it Colomeco?
Colomeco.
Colomeco, I'm sorry. Ms. Colomeco, certainly the scanning machine, I think, is something that's imperative, because your clientele is basically probably young professionals and professionals with the wine and craft beer, but this will change dramatically if that were to be the case, and you're going to have to have more safeguards.
Sure.
One question that I think is more towards the board, and I was just thinking, not towards you, but I'm thinking forward here. If something were to happen in the business sells, you know, one of the things we do is we automatically assume that whoever buys the business then gets the liquor license. But I'm saying, we don't, you know, we don't have to approve generally the transfer of liquor license, right, when businesses sell? I mean, if something happened, she had to sell her business, do we have to approve the sale of the liquor license?
The liquor license, and don't quote me because it's been a while since I do this, it's an asset to the business... it's an asset to the business that they can transfer to a new owner, and then the person comes in for a change of manager.
When it's up again, you don't have to pass it.
I was always under the impression that it would be very difficult to stop a transfer if you so choose. That's what I was always told unless there was...
You would have, need cause, I think, wouldn't you?
Mine was, though, and I had to go through the whole process.
You were transferred?
Transfer, I had to still come and, yeah, when I...
I think to join, you know, if you were to sell your business and the person had a criminal background, I think we could stop it.
Yes.
But short of that, I don't think we could stop it. I don't think.
I thought you could, because you had to vote when I got it.
I think that we, I think that's pretty hard, we're hard pressed not to vote against it, because I think we have to, we have to. That's my only reason for saying, is like, I want you to survive, I want you to have your business, that's not my issue. It's just that if something were to happen, then boom, somebody comes in and now they've got the license, as opposed to somebody who's had a track record and been doing over the course of time. But it's neither here nor there, I'm just curious if that's one of the things. You know, North Situate needs help, there's no doubt about it. You know, being able to kind of spread things around to me makes sense. So now you have three different areas between Green Bush, the harbor, and North Situate. And so I see that, because North Situate needs more diversity in its business. And for those people in the area, probably go to Curtis and Cohasset. And I think you might find some people will probably stop, and I know parking is across the street, so maybe that's an issue for people, but it shouldn't be. But you've got to have the security.
Right.
And I'm only saying that because we've talked about it, and you've done a great job, we haven't heard from you. You know, for somebody selling underage, and that's phenomenal, but I'm saying, I think it changes things differently now, and you've got to be vigilant on that front.
Agreed.
Karen?
Yeah, so, you know, many years ago, as some of us can remember, we used to have a full liquor store across from where Tracy is now, and it was a nice little place. When we lost that, I think that we lose a lot of, like, a lot of my family lives over in North Situate, Minutet area. We lose those people to, Rick Curtis can't watch this, right? We lose this to Curtis and Cohasset. Now, I'm definitely in support of Dan having a full, you know, a beer and wine license. I think the biggest difference is if somebody goes to Dan's for vodka or some sort of hot alcohol, we lose those people to other Situate businesses. So to look at the businesses as a whole, I think this is beneficial to everybody. I think that we do, again, need enough something in North Situate. I would love to see her get the ID check thing, I've heard many good things about that. Apparently, I don't know if it was Dan that told me that if someone who's underage tries to use that, and there's another store in town that has that same system, it lets them know ahead of time that someone's just tried to buy from Dan's store, they go to Tracy's store, they're not allowed to buy, she already knows ahead of time. It's a pretty good system.
That's good.
And I actually stopped into her store today, just to have an idea of what, I wanted to get a general feel for what the place was going to be, and I think it's, I think she's got a good plan.
Great. Well, I won't repeat some of the obvious things that they've said, I think North Situate could use it, I think Dan's done a great job in his area too, and it seems to be a good little piece of the puzzle to keep two people happy if we can pull that off. You know, as I mentioned before, if you have the space, you need that, and it sounds like you have another 400 or 500 square feet to do that, and then, you know, we can't make you do that, but we hope you take the security feature seriously, because if you do become in violation, then we're going to be very strong and penalize you very hard, so. But we haven't had, we've been pretty lucky so far, so I think it's a good location for it, and I'd like to see you, you know, continue to do well there. So, any discussion from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Amber Vine, Hannah Chrisfield, I'm a merchant in North Situate, a resident of North Situate, and we do need a full liquor license in North Situate. And I have known Tracy since she opened, I've been in her business more often than I probably should, but I'm sure going in there, she's a very, very hard worker and an asset to the village. And, you know, we have box in person going in where Countryway Liquor used to be, and we have fitness, we need more retail, and this would give more business, more traffic to North Situate, which is what we desperately need up there. Silage notwithstanding.
Take an issue for another day.
Take an issue for another day.
Sure.
Tracy really is a very, very hard worker, I'm repeating myself, and an asset to the community. Really, I think that North Situate needs a full liquor license. Thank you.
Any other comments? Someone make a motion?
One last question I have.
I want to ask a question too.
John?
My first question is this, so by making a motion on this liquor license, then, we're going to have to, if somebody wants to, because you have just a beer and wine license, automatically, so people understand, by getting this, now you have to return or turn over your, relinquish your beer and wine license. And is that like within 30 days? Is that what it normally takes, or does it happen as soon as they get?
Probably she has to get the other one first, I imagine, right?
As soon as we give her, give Still Waters the full liquor license, she would relinquish her.
All right, and then that makes that license available right then and there? And then an application has to go through for it at that point in time?
Then we'll do the same thing, we'll post the notice in the newspaper for the public hearing, we'll take applications. It's the same process that we follow this evening.
And that's true. I can tell everybody, you're right, they can apply for it, but I'm voting for Sand Hills to get it, so, just putting it on the record. They've done a phenomenal job on their store and...
Very well tested, so.
They've done a great job. But, so that was my first question, so how long would that take? What's the timing on that, generally, 45 days?
It all depends on how quickly it moves through the ADCC, approximately 30 days. You know, if we vote on it tonight, she's already submitted her application, and we will move on it right away. We'll have you sign it tonight before 4:30, and get it right.
That was my question, thank you.
Just to add to that a little bit, Laura, maybe you can answer this, so as far as timing goes, so Tracy applies for this or whatever, and then Dan would then apply for hers, is there a waiting, I mean, is there a time period in between there? Because the other concern is that his seasonal is up, he's got to be January 15.
And I don't see any problem with...
It's got to go in the paper, it's got to go through the regular process.
Right.
I don't see any problem in having it done within the timeline, to have it for Dan prior to his...
Well, we're not going to...
Yeah, if you don't want to make any...
Right. We'll put it in the paper, applicants will put in their application. If Dan happens to get it, then there'll be a seasonal license out available for, out there as well, so.
Right, I was just trying to come up with a motion, but all the motions we've done for liquor licenses, they have square footage, they have egress and easement, don't they, John?
Everything should be in the background for the application.
But the actual motion, there is a motion right here.
Yeah, there's a motion, there's a motion that's written.
All right, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Curtin?
I move to approve Still Waters Wine a retail all alcohol license.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? No opposition, so it wins unanimously, congratulations. Good luck.
Good luck.
We'll sign this stuff tonight, we'll get the paperwork underway, and then you'll come in, and then Dan, you'll follow, I don't know, do they even have to reapply, or can they just move their license?
I'll talk to both of them.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, moving right along.
Easement?
Oh, no, we have the library. So, at 7:35, a discussion on the library renovation, change orders. Joe Sullivan, how are you? Dataless, and the rest of you?
You're not coming up?
How are you?
Great, thanks for having us on short notice as well. You all know Conrad from Odin Elo's architectural firm. I think I'd like to have him give you a quick summary of the events, we told you we'd come back and give you an update. I'm happy to say, many of you came out to actually visualize the challenges that we have with the library, and Conrad will be able to give you an opportunity to just give a quick observation and overview of where we're at.
And just Ed DeSalvios here, also from the Public Building Commission as well, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Great, thank you. I'm Conrad Elo with Odin's Elo Architecture. Thanks for having us again tonight. We're here tonight to inform you about some recent discoveries that have come out of the ongoing selective demolition of the library. We're two months into construction, as you all know, on the library, it's a roughly 14-month construction process, and for a big renovation addition project like this, there are unknowns that come up, these happen to be some significant unknowns, and we're here tonight really to talk about that and hope that you guys can render kind of a collective decision on a preferred direction forward. We're aware that any change orders that exceed $50,000, we need your approval on, but we don't actually have any formal change orders tonight that exceed that to talk to you about. However, the problems that we've uncovered, we have a sense of how much they're going to cost, and the order of magnitude is significant enough to where we want your blessing on the right way to move forward, and those change orders would then follow, and obviously, I would assume we would come back in front of you for any of the change orders that exceed So selective demolition has basically opened up the building, it's important to realize that this project, there was, because we're stitching in some new additions to the existing building, we always had in the bid documents a removal of about 50% of the building, so it was always going to be a big sort of demolition removal project. Unfortunately, what we're discovering is that the remaining pieces of the structure that we had hoped to hold on to, to preserve, you know, so that we weren't, you know, pulling the thread too far, are really structurally deficient. The structural engineer and our design team, we're aware of certain conditions within the building, certainly we did field visits prior to the bid documents being completed. We had existing conditions drawings from 1978, so we're aware of certain details that were at least intended as part of the building project. But what we didn't know about is that the performance of those details, or even the way those details were carried out on site, they weren't reflective of that when we went through the design process. So we're uncovering things that are true structural deficiencies moving forward. So I'm just going to, you all have a packet, and I know certainly Mr. Harris was part of a Public Building Commission meeting last Tuesday, so he heard more of the sort of back and forth at that point, so I don't know.
Yeah, we've all read the packet and looked at the pictures, and I think all of us actually went out and looked at...
So just to kind of give you just a quick synopsis of that, since you are at least apprised of what's going on, there are really two areas of focus. One area is what we're calling the southwest wing of the building, it's really where the former children's wing was. It's a series of pre-engineered roof trusses, and when we opened it up, there were all sorts of deficiencies with it. As I mentioned, the engineer was aware of certain issues like splices between 2x4 cords, you know, as it spans across the space, but it was assumed that at least it was designed to meet code, and it was behaving to meet code, at least as code stood back in 1978. And once those trusses were exposed, we're noticing, you know, real buckling, real failure, we're noticing conditions where just the way it was constructed and installed is a poor craftsmanship and poor quality. There's myriad problems, and I think those were outlined in fairly good detail in the letters, both from the general contractor, Castagna Construction, as well as our structural engineer, RSE Associates. And the pictures, I think, highlight some of the issues. The other area of concern is the main wing of the building, it's where the sort of circulation desk was, and the main adult stacks. There are some large engineered trusses that sort of create a rectangle around the middle of that large space, and there's roof rafters that frame into that. Unfortunately, some of the problems that we've discovered in the southwest wing are interrelated to this, the roof rafters that tie into the main trusses. There's about a third of the roof rafters that we had hoped to preserve, that would have to come out anyway in order to remove or remediate some of the problems of the southwest wing. We also discovered a lot of, again, some poor craftsmanship, some details that were executed differently than the drawings showed. For example, we had ceiling joists that were called to be removed, that the drawings showed, were sort of hung off of rafters, well, those rafters are bearing on those ceiling joists, and so even the way the weight is transferred from those roof rafters down into the foundation wall is not, would never meet current code. So there's just a lot of problems. Unfortunately, these are big dollar items, we've tried to estimate what these change orders will be based on conversations with both Joe and his company, Dataless, as well as conversations with the general contractor, and we have a sense of where things are headed. But it's an order of magnitude at this point, and we think the combined problem with the structural deficiencies is going to total around $300,000. There's two approaches to how we get around this. One is complete removal of all of the roof framing that we had hoped we could keep. And keep in mind, a lot of it was coming out anyway, so it was, we're now talking about the remaining pieces of roof. We feel that's the most prudent approach, because it basically gets out all of those defective conditions, and you're basically building a new, we know what we have, and you're getting, the town is getting a roof that's going to last 50, 60 years. If we patch and repair, you know, we're basically patching on patches, we've even noticed there are certain things like splices on columns that are evidence of patches that occurred during the original construction, and so patching or reinforcing on top of patches is not the best practice moving forward. So we have those two options, and that's really what we want to talk to you about today, is do we fully replace it, or do we repair? The estimates that we provided here in terms of order of magnitude dollars are really tied to that full replacement, because it's easier to get your head around what goes into that. The reason we can't give you a full value for the repair is that in order to do the repair, you've got to do an extensive weeks-long analysis, the structural engineer would have to analyze every member, and there are very different defects depending on where you are in the roof. So there's a protracted schedule that we would be faced with if we have to go that repairs route. Our feeling, our professional judgment, I would say collectively, is the repair or rebuild is going to shake out about the same. And really what it is, is you've got demolition and new materials if you rebuild, so you've got costs associated with that, and for the repairs, you've got time. It's going to take three or four more weeks to analyze it, and that's general conditions that we're adding to the project, because the general contractor's on site and mobilized, ready to go. But then there's also high labor costs for the kind of intricate repair work that we're talking about. So order of magnitude of $300,000, we think, is kind of a wash whether you go the repairs or rebuild route. So for us, it seems like an obvious path forward to go the rebuild route and to move past this logjam. Right now, over the last week, as we've kind of tried to get our head around the issue, really, construction project has stopped. They can't move forward until these pieces of the building are out of the way, they can't actually begin the footing work, the foundation work, which is lower down in the building, until we make this decision about demolition up at the higher levels. So today's discussion, and we're happy to answer further questions, I'm kind of done talking, is really to get you to give us some guidance moving forward, and hopefully we can kind of release that logjam, that delay right now, and get them going again on progress.
Great. Ed, you went out and looked at it, you have an opinion on it?
Yes, the builder committee met last week with Joe and Conrad, and we went through what he's been discussing, what he's presented in his reports, and I actually myself went out to the site a week ago Friday. For those of you who don't know, I'm a registered structural engineer, so it was right in my wheelhouse, I went out there to see the structural problems. The southwest wing is in very bad condition, the roof trusses, they show, a lot of the trusses have failed, they buckle, you'll see members that are just 6, 8 inches out of plane, which is an indication that they failed, they've been a little bit stressed over the years by snow, and they've just buckled. The connections have fallen apart, the trusses, where they frame into the steel support members, timber that's connected to the steel support members is actually rolling out away from the steel. And a lot of the connections don't even have the appropriate amount of nails in the connections. They might, the connections, if you've ever seen six of strong type connections, they have loaded with holes, and you may have to put 6 to 12 nails in each connection, where you might only see 2 or 3 nails that are given connection out there. And there's splice plates that are coming apart on cord members, and there's a general lack of bracing for the trusses in general. They're 2x4 trusses... They're 2x4 trusses, they're about 2 feet on center. Nowadays, you build the trusses, 2x6s nowadays with the building code you have nowadays, and there'd be a lot more brace and support in the trusses. So in my opinion, I agree with what the consultants are saying, that the southwest wing has serious structural problems. And as Conrad has mentioned, you could take the road of going through a long, drawn-out, 2, 3, 4, you can now see what you have to do to reinforce all those trusses. But then you may, at the end of the day, you may find that you just can't reinforce them enough to carry the new snow loads. Because in 1978, when that building code came out, that was about the time the first mass state building code came out, and the snow loads and the wind loads in that code were much lower than today's code. Situate snow loads and wind loads are much higher than they were in 1978. So to do the analysis on the roof nowadays, on those trusses, they have to follow the current building code loads, which are a lot higher than what they were originally designed for. So we may end up spending a lot of money on the structural engineer doing analysis only to find out the trusses still won't work, and we have to take them down anyways. And even if it could be reinforced, it'd be a lot of intricate piecework, trying to get people to squeeze between 2-foot spaces and add steel stiffener plates and timber members and such, and bolts and connections. It's just in real poor shape. And my suggestion, the committee was pretty much on board at the last meeting, would be to demo the southwest roof and start anew with that. The center portion, the main portion of the building that they discussed, we have the large 10, 15-foot tall trusses that are up in the air right now. Those do pose problems as well from a stability standpoint. Some of the columns are out of plumb. You can even see that when they originally constructed, they were too short, so they scabbed on additional column cap plates on top of them. And the floor around the columns, the two-story columns that run from the basement all the way up to the high roof elevation, they're braced by the existing concrete floor slab. And a lot of that floor slab's coming out for the new work. And the contractor and assuring contractors feel that there's no way to brace those trusses to be in place because the conditions of the building, there'll be no floor slab where a brace may want to go. And they don't want to brace up existing brick walls that are still in place because they're unstable. I was out there, and some of the brick walls that were out there were built terribly. They were anchored into the floor slab with only bolts that went in about 2 inches. And they actually fell over when they started taking the roof off of the building. And one of the construction workers actually had to push over another one by hand. So the quality of the work of the original building is quite poor. So I can see what the contractor is saying, that there's really nothing solid to brace the main trusses up. So demoing the, for the 4 steel, 6 steel columns, demoing those down the foundation, taking the trusses out, and putting it in a new structural steel framing system would be the prudent thing to do in that case. You could do the same scenario, trying to reinforce it, spending a lot of money analyzing it and reinforcing it versus just spending probably less money knocking it down and building a new steel frame system and keeping the schedule going on the project.
Thanks, Ed. I don't know, Kevin, did you have any, I know you went out and looked at it, did you have any thing to add?
No.
You agree with these guys?
Oh, yeah.
Great. So just the whole discussion of both what Conrad and Ed were speaking about is that we did own considerable amount of work as far as shoring details with that. And we're analyzing that to determine what that credit would be back for not performing those services and trying to offset those costs associated with if we did a new structural frame, steel columns and beams. That would make the building last 50 to 60 years that you're looking for. Ultimately, you know, we, in my feeling, and I've done this for a considerable amount of time, we tried to, and I disclosed to you that we were doing an evaluation investigation after looking at it closely with the structural engineers and the team that's out there. And we're working as a team to get this done. Santa's not walking away from it saying, hey, throwing their hands up, you know, we're done till you make a decision. They're trying to work with us to figure out what the best alternative methods are to get the building done and get over this hurdle. What I've seen, and what's problematic to me, is that you could try to retrofit, and you might, as Ed was saying, get an engineer out there to give you some repairs and not meet the code. However, you're only trying to fix a problem of failure to start with. So you'll be putting or scabbing, as I would call it, a building back together to try to make it last another 50 years. It just didn't make economic sense.
I don't think, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't think anyone's leaning towards retrofitting it.
Right. I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I did not take a tour of it. I went out and drove around, but I didn't get a chance to go through it. But the photographs pretty much show what kind of a hack job was done in '78. It's a shame. And clearly, the building is in certain sections' failure. So it makes no sense to have the town try to cosmetically fix this. I like the term Ed used, scabbing. I'm like, that explains it all.
So I want to give you a little, now, you know, you look at the building as it, was it worth saving in the beginning? You still have about $3.2 million of good work still in place. And I'm talking about the foundations, the site work involved, the exterior walls. So there is a savings there for renovating this building. I mean, we're not tearing it, you know, you think we're taking off the roof structure, why didn't we just tear it down? I mean, those are the conversations going back and forth. And I did put, you know, I sat down with our team, and we looked at the value, that what it would have been to, you know, excavate, do the footings, foundations, the slabs, all of that work to get it to the point where we start to do the roof structure over again. So there is some added value there. One of the, you know, foresights that we did do, and I was complimenting you guys at the last meeting, that we took $300,000 out of the bid savings and put it towards the building contingency, because we didn't know what the interior, the framing was. You can have a set of ASBILs, but they're not always accurate until you start to do some of the selective demo. So the fortunate part is, we did have the funds available to do that, and, you know, thankfully so, because our contingency would have gotten depleted pretty quickly.
So here's my two questions. One, the guy that built the building didn't do a good job, so the parts that we're keeping may not have done a good job on either. You know, if we looked at the rest of the building to make sure that it's structurally sound, and that you're not going to find the quality of work that was done on the roof and the walls that we're keeping.
Right. And we have begun that process. We actually did a few exploratory holes in some of the CMU blocks. You know, the drawings stated that there wasn't any cells or rebar coming up, so we kind of are aware of that. But we also have details in part of that building, how to reinforce them for the structural portion of this building moving forward. I mean, Conrad's team and his structural team did a good job of what they were trying to do on certain components to make the structure work. And I think those same components are going to move forward. Will we find locations of, you know, CMU when we go to look at something? It may come up, but we're looking at that pretty closely right now.
It's a good question. And Ed pointed out, you know, one of the piers, somebody was pushed over. I will point out that a lot of the walls, these deficient walls that Ed was referring to, are coming out. They were already slated to come out. There are a handful of piers, these kind that you could probably push over, once we remove the full roof, which we might be moving in that direction, that are local conditions that we're going to have to look at.
Reinforcement.
So I think to Joe's point, there probably will be a little bit more remediation work, but it's not going to be of the magnitude that we're talking about tonight. It's probably localized.
But is that part of any of these estimates?
It's not. But again, it's, and it's hard to put a finger on it now, because selective demolition things are emerging as we talk. But it's, like I said, it's local conditions that we would be looking at to perhaps reinforce. Or in the case of the piers, we might say, let's push those over, since you can literally do that, and we'll replace that with a window. Order of magnitude of that kind of change is $10,000. It's not $100,000 or $300,000 that we're talking about. So we'll have to, we will have to, we will certainly keep you apprised of further discoveries. But we feel we've uncovered what will be this project's big issue.
So just to reiterate, we don't want to build a building that's defective in half of the building, the half of the building that we're keeping. You know, looking at the pictures and reading the stuff, you know, it sounds like the thing could have fallen down, you know, in a good snowstorm. So, you know, we're building a structure to last 50 years, not half a structure to last 50 years.
Right. We're not going to design a roof to go back onto an exterior shell that's going to collapse. So destruction engineers looking into all of the avenues, basically, for that design to figure out what we're going to need to do, either to replace, reinforce, or repair to make sure that the building lasts for 50, 60 years.
So I guess, two questions. First of all, when, I mean, looking at it, it's easier to give us a solid number when you're redoing the entire thing versus, as you were saying, a renovation-type process. That's one question. When do you think you'd have that in? And secondarily, is as far as the crediting you're talking about back for things you're not going to have to do, I mean, when would we be able to see some numbers on that?
Well, we've tentatively put some figures together initially, based on, you know, you've got to remember, all of this evolved pretty quickly, and we were trying to, you know, get some solid numbers. I mean, we know what costs of material are going to be. We know what the costs of labor are going to be based on previous expenditures. You know, I did a quick analysis when this all occurred on the repair aspect of it. And, you know, we put, you know, general conditions, materials, selective demo, that labor into it. So we know what those entities are, and we kind of got a ballpark number based on discussions with the general contractor. The credit portion of this is the details that Conrad and his team are putting together to say, we had bracing, we had details on column reinforcement. All of those, they're putting a list together to make sure that we get that back from the general contractor. So, you know, as an order-of-magnitude, we turned around and said, you know, it's 179 for the children's wing to redo it. There's going to be portions of work that they had to do in that location that we're going to look at to make sure that we're getting the credits back on. So that number may come down and may offset some of the other stuff that we have going on. I know the largest truss section there, we're really looking at, because there was a lot of work involved trying to keep them to stay with the reinforcing and the details and the underpinning and all of that. So, you know, I mean, we were hoping to have that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to jump on this. We've got preliminary sketches from the structural engineer, and that's what the contractor's looking at to give order-of-magnitude costs that Joe was talking about. It's not until the engineer's final design is in place and we can formally issue it to the GC that we can get actual numbers back and we can evaluate those credits that you're talking about. So a couple weeks, three weeks? I mean, we're obviously moving as fast as we can with the structural redesigns so as to not slow down any process. There's steel, long lead items, you've got to order steel well in advance. We want to make sure those things are in place this week if we can.
So our minimum impact is about six weeks, based on all of the findings that we have in front of you today.
So, I don't know when everyone's done. So I guess my question is, we've got about a $300,000 added work that has to be done in this. Who does that work? Do we put it out to bid? How does that?
So the general contractor is ultimately responsible for finding whoever they're going to do to perform these services. The demo portion of it, they have a demo contractor on-site right now, which they're going to try to, and we're looking to hopefully get the blessing to move forward in that direction, to not slow the schedule down. I have instructed them to try to solicit costs from local vendors in the town of Situate to price, to give prices for the framing aspect of the work, the extra work that we're looking to do. And they're going to look into those avenues as well.
And it's not only local. I mean, local's great, but we want quality, and we want the cost to be.
Yeah, they won't hire somebody who's going to do a hack job.
No, no. You know, we just went through the whole ordeal with the asbestos stuff, and we weren't really happy with the process and the way that went through. You know, we want to just, we don't want to bid it out to somebody and hear from local people it could have been done for half the price. So obviously, I'm exaggerating a little bit there, but that's the concept. So if it goes through the normal bid process, then you know that it does that. And that's what I don't understand. Does it just go to the general contractor, and he can give it to whoever he wants? Or does a repair of that magnitude have to go out to bid?
No, we don't have to go out to bid. It would be awarded to the general contractor.
Okay. So they can just give it to whoever they want? Or do you make this decision?
No, well, we evaluate their proposals as it comes in, and they're going to give us subcontractors involved with it. It's all prevailing way, it all has to meet the procurement process that we went through to solicit the general contractor in the very beginning. This carpentry, this plumbing, this electrical, he still has to go through that same route.
Yeah, it'll be a state-qualified.
Don't we have pre-approved subcontractors that you have to go through? Because it's a public building?
What was that name?
Don't you have pre-approved subcontractors that the general contractor has to go through because it is?
Yeah, we already have filed subcontract, there was 18 filed subcontractors involved with this procurement. So the carpentry portion of it, he'll solicit, I'm sure he's going to go out and, he's not going to hire the first guy that he gets a number from, I can tell you that much. Because at the end of the day, you know, he's trying to tighten up his number as much as possible, obviously, for profit purposes as well. We look at the overall quality of who's doing the work, the scope of work based on the engineering documentation that we're getting. And we have, as John Christensen's on-site, making sure that the quality of work based on the specifications given is met, period. There's not going to, it's not going up deficient just because it was deficient in 1978.
No, no, I know. I guess my thought is, when we rush in, where we have to do things quickly, and it's going to delay the project, and we've got to get it done, that's an opportunity for someone to kind of charge a premium to come and spring them in and do it. And that's what I'm just trying to avoid.
So what we've done, and I can, what I can put at ease is that we've done some preliminary numbers based on what we feel that value of that work is right now, period. So at the end of the day, let's say we move forward and we say we're going to go for the full restoration. We're going to give the okay to have the demo done, because we've got a dollar value, and we feel within that dollar value, it's worth X to go ahead and start that work. When they're getting all of these numbers back to us based on the structural engineer's design on that, we're still evaluating the costs associated with what they're giving us. So it's not, it's not an open checkbook to just run with this, and you're going to charge us $1 million for this. And the other portion of this, even if it was discovered and we knew about it, there'd be a dollar value, we would have paid at bid day for the reconstruction of this roof. The differential that you're talking about is that premium for not knowing it right now. That's the differential. Okay?
So just, Joe, the one thing that I'm, you know, I'm all for demoing, taking all the stuff out and doing it again. But what I'm getting concerned about is now we're 300 into our contingency, another 50 that we just approved at the last meeting. So now you're, it's an $800,000 contingency, we're now down to $450,000. And this is just the start. And I say that because I'm like, it's got to come in.
What kind of budget?
Because I'm like, there's no way that I'm going to support going out to ask people after we've just gone through for the public safety building and the school. I can only hear it. And the other reason I say is because, and this has nothing to do with you, but, you know, the trustees were going to raise a lot of money for the building, and they didn't come up with a number that they told the people. And I'm like, there's no way I'm going to go back to the taxpayer and say, pay more money for it. So that's why I'm saying, you've got your hand on the pulse of making it happen. I know Ed and the committee, but I'm like, it's got to come in, period. I have no issues with this. You could spend it all fixing this $800,000, but not a penny after that. So I'm like, manage it well, because.
We're doing everything in our power.
And I know you are. I'm not saying you're not.
I can tell you, there hasn't been, in my 15-year career, I've yet to bring a project in on budget, so, and that's my intent.
On budget?
Yeah, not to.
Yeah, not to.
To bring it on budget. Bring in on budget.
Well, also, the budget was, you know, the financing got an extra $500,000 or $300,000 to go to the contingency?
Well, we always had it budgeted for that dollar value. The bid savings that we had, we saved, the lowest bidder at the time had a bid savings of about $400 and change. We took 300 of that and added it to the contingency, because we didn't know what the condition was.
So the rest, it went back to the town?
No, it's just, I mean, it's not a gift back to the town. It's just we didn't have to borrow that much more money during the procurement bonding process.
But my point is, the contingent that was in the project got elevated by about $300,000.
Correct. So. It's a good thing we did that.
Well, I'm grateful for that foresight, right now.
I was, I'm just going to say, so in experience, as you're uncovering these things and you're finding them, those are where you've got a lot of hidden costs that we didn't know. But I would say that at that point forward, it should be pretty smooth sailing.
90% of most change orders are in the ground. Unfascined, unsuitable materials. Those are the typical defects. When you're doing a renovation, it's in the shell of the building once you start to do selective demo and show some of the existing structure. Once you have the shell back up, the changes in scope reduce quite a bit. It may be, and hopefully, I'm coming back to you to say, I'm looking for a change order because we're improving this facade finish versus a wall. I mean, that's the best way I can describe it. So, you know, we're hoping once the shell is up, it's going to reduce significantly the findings moving forward. And I'm not going to look you in the eye and say, there aren't going to be issues as going to be issues as we move forward about, you know, certain things that we're going to be paying for, for coordination," because it always happens. There's a percentage of it. But I can tell you that we'll thoroughly vet them, make sure sure that, you know, we're paying for the dollar that we're getting, and we're getting the quality that we need.
I do want to point out that in those order of magnitude numbers, there are two pieces that we know with great detail what their values are, and that's the demolition for both parts of the building. And we have potential change orders here. The first is PCO 9, which is for the removal of the trusses in the southwest wing, and that's for $45,360. We've got that here. And then the other is for the main truss removal, and that's, the value's 32,928. In an ideal world, we're calling the contractor the second we walk out of this room and telling them those are ready to go and approved. These are not values that I think we need selectmen approval on, but since they're kind of collectively part of that, I just want you to be aware of that, and if that makes sense to have the selectmen acknowledge that in any way, that we have those values ready. So, that's...
Did you vote on it?
We have to...
Yeah, so Conrad, what's the total all-in number for the work you want to authorize to go forward with?
For tomorrow?
Yeah.
It's the demolition work, so it would be 78,000 and change. So, the two combined could be lumped into a formal change order that we can put back in front of you at a later date, but we have the potential change orders in hand.
There's two separate entities, so they each could be two separate PCOs. So, I mean, the total's $78,288 for the demo for the two projects.
And what about the roof?
Those costs, we won't have specific numbers on until we vetted all the credits and we have the structural engineer's design in hand.
Is that 70 part of the 300 you gave us?
Yes, it is. It's not over, it's not on top of it.
Break here.
So...
It's a portion of it.
Yep, that's right.
So, my recommendation to the board would be to vote to approve the 78,288 to proceed with the demolition of the bidding, and then a vote to endorse further action to affect the change orders to put a new roof on the building.
Sean, did you have something?
Yes. I just had the opportunity to go out today, I met with John and Jared, one's from the O P M, the other is from the G C. No questions, you know, about the trusses on the children's wing, you know. I guess I have a new appreciation for what Joe has done. When I sat at the public building meeting, you know, sitting in the background, you know, a little upset that this stuff didn't get noticed earlier. But having walked through the building today, you know, and they really, you know, we see in these pictures, I took the same pictures with my phone, is what's in here, not knowing. I guess I have a new appreciation for John. Demo contractor's still there, so he could move right on to remove the trusses of the children's wing, I guess, the two-by-four trusses.
Right.
My question is, I guess, sitting here listening, I'm still not really clear, the concrete slab underneath the timber structure that we see going down Branch Street, you've got to excavate, some of that's coming up, going right down to the basement. So, they're nervous about leaving the timbers up there.
Correct.
Because it would fall over.
The lateral support, some of that planking's doing.
Right. So, the question is, replace that with steel. And I think Marty alluded to it, so there's a lead time to order the steel.
That's built into our six weeks that we feel that it would be continued general condition as part of that timeline.
All right. Some time ago, some of that wooden structure was discussed to leave in place and maybe even have exposed. But if you have the question to remove it, leave it on site, do what they have to do, put it back up.
We were, the final design never had it to be exposed.
Oh, one of the guys today thought Jared or John...
Yeah, no, Jared, no. The answer is never, it was never to be exposed. It was too costly to have it exposed based on how we were trying to...
Yeah, I mean, it was all the reinforcement that we're hopefully getting a credit for that was the reason why we didn't expose it, because it would have had to have been so heavily reinforced that it just kind of altered the visual beauty of those trusses.
And then finally, the brick piers. And again, I was told, I guess, there is a bond beam to Tony's question. I asked John about that. I said, "I don't see any rebar sticking out of these blocks. Where is it?" And he said, he showed me there was a bond beam around there, that it was...
The outside perimeter.
Right, to Tony's point, that it won't collapse.
No.
All right. And then finally, these brick pillars that, you know, I don't know why it was designed the way it was. They stick out beyond the foundation. I guess you could push them over. My thought, you know, I'd like to see you get creative. I mean, they do look nice, so rather than just knock them over when it comes to that, you know, excavate externally, pour a footing or something like that. And, you know, granted, everything has to be stamped by the, you know, the structural engineer, like yourself, but I'd like to see you get kind of creative with that stuff. Again, to Marty's point, I think we're to the point where there shouldn't be any big surprises. I've sat next to Jim Hunt back there last week and thought to myself, "Just what you just said, you know, gee, what's left? Just knock it down and start over." Then Jess said, "We wouldn't be, we wouldn't have got the grant money."
Right, that's fair to say.
So, and seeing what was there, there was still 30% or 40% there that's solid. So, I guess that's my only other point, is try to get creative with these little things like that.
Yeah. I mean, there are definitely ways to do that, and I think that's not a bad suggestion, to maybe just pour footing under those piers, temporarily brace them.
And then fill the blocks, fill cells full of route, and now it's a solid pair of that.
That's right.
And then there may be some slips that we may have to add. Those are some of the things that we're going to have to look at as we take the roof off and see the stability of these columns and what we're going to be bearing on them. Because if you think about it, the outside loads, we're all going to those, that's what was holding those piers in place. It was the entire structure, and as you slowly selectively take it apart, that's when things become unsafe.
It's kind of hot.
Just save us like 100 bucks in designing these.
So, the next question I would just have is, so, obviously, a bit of a delay here and there. What about weather tight? How's that going to work? I mean...
Oh, it's, you know...
Right, so we're going to make a contingent.
The answer is, it's delaying that, obviously. You know, but the good news is, as Sean's saying, the payment will be done, the payment contractor's still the demo, so he can mobilize. It's not like a remobilization. He's just moving locations and efforts to go ahead and start the demo. So, the quicker we can expedite those topics, the quicker we can get it tight.
And the southwest wing solution, the new rebuild is primarily wood, so it's not a long lead item. And the hope would be, if we can quickly move on this, in this direction...
It's a mess.
You know, we can get that under roof.
Is that all engineered lumber?
It would be engineered lumber, whether it's TJIs or L V Ls or something, but, yeah, so, it's contingent on getting that design in place, but we're working very hard to do that quickly.
We've had a lot of heated conversations about how to...
So, I think we're on the same page. So, Ed, is this, are you fine with all this going on here, that if we can vote this $78,000 demolition and then proceed with the bigger project if we choose to do that? Is that for the...
Right, the building committee will vote, hopefully, this evening, if I can gather a quorum. I think we have a quorum here tonight. We'll vote on the two demolition change orders this evening to approve those.
And then we'll come back with some hotter numbers.
So, Ed, I just thought, if you have a quorum now and you're posted, you can go vote to approve these, and then let me know, and then they can do it, instead of them voting, making a contingent on your vote, which you're potentially going to do in 10 minutes. So, the Public Building Commission is posted for purposes of your discussion, so they're here, so we don't delay.
That was smart.
So, is the sense of the board to proceed with the demolition and repair the roof, I mean, not repair the roof, but demolish the roof and start?
Yes.
Yes.
And Joe, I had one more question. How much of the area is going to be excavated?
How much of the area?
That the site is going to be, when you said the only other...
There's two additions going on. One's on the north side and one on the east.
And when is that excavation due to start as part of the...
Soon as the demo's done.
Soon as the demo's done.
Okay. And the soil, that's had soils testing?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's the only other unknown.
The good news is, that's being removed for foundations, and we're in good shape there.
Okay.
So we should wait until you guys go vote, and then we'll make a motion? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, but the other thing is, I would, it would help, so things go swifter when you do get the actual change orders for the roof replacement, to just make a motion and vote to endorse the removal and replacement of the roof.
That way, we're formally just giving you numbers at that point, not to exceed 306.
So let me explain what's going on here. The Public Building Commission is actually charged with all this. It's before you, because it's over $50,000. Not that you're the owner of the building, but we're just trying to be correct procedurally, that you're really acting on recommend, the Public Building Commission recommends to you, and they haven't had that opportunity to do it yet. So that's why it's kind of confusing.
So why don't we table this discussion for a minute? You guys go have your meeting and see what you come with. Come back to us, and then we'll make a final decision on this.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you for finding it.
So that should give us enough time to do the drain easement on Old Oak and Bucket?
Yeah.
We're going to a different room.
Good.
Next door is something up the hallway.
Good evening, again.
Hey, Kevin?
This Historic Society is selling a parcel of land on 50 Old Oak and Bucket Road as a buildable lot. There's a drain line and easement that goes down the center of the parcel. The developer purchasing the lot has made the sale contingent on the relocation of drain line and easements. So we're here tonight to request that the selectmen accept this new drainage easement as outlined in the plans provided to you and dissolve the old easement to complete the sale of the property. There is also a copy of the drawing that shows where the two easements are, here. The builder will complete the following. He is going to replace the drainage that's there and relocate it with the offset lines, which are shown in red. He will pay for the recording of the new easement and pay to dissolve the old easement. He will also make improvements to the water quality by adding a storm scepter.
So where is this Old Oak and Bucket?
50 Old Oak and Bucket Road.
Where's that?
Between 50 and 52.
It's right across from the Old Oak and Bucket house.
Old Oak and Bucket, the well.
Okay. And the Historical Society is selling it?
Yes.
And they're selling it to you?
Presently, yes.
Okay. And you, and we need to move the drain, and you're going to take care of all the things that he said, or the purchaser?
No cost overruns to the taxpayers, and we won't come back for any extra money. How's that?
It won't pass.
And as an improvement, he is adding a storm scepter to improve the water quality that goes through that area.
Okay, any questions?
Nope. I met with Mr. Bajorklan. I went over the plan, and it seems like he's taking, making adequate, doing the adequate adjustments in the design.
So what is going, what's going to go on that property?
The house.
One single-family home.
Single-family home.
And all the materials will be to town standards, concrete pipe, concrete manholes, American castings.
21 inches, 24 inches, 21 inch.
It's large pipe.
Right.
Baseball field. Now, this is under a roadway. It's all fallen through the woods by the stubble and concrete.
No, I bet on Steve, I'm sure the drainage should be better than what it is now.
Were there any issues with the butters?
I actually have met with a couple of the butters, and they were pretty happy that there was going to be a single-family home going in here, because every time a tree limb comes down, or a tree comes down, it tends to fall towards their driveway, because the driveway's on two sides of this. So, they basically wrote a letter saying they're happy to see a single-family home go in there and have the property be taken care of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything from the audience? Anyone want to make a motion to ask us?
Let's see.
Here's the motion.
I'm going to make one comment before you do.
Yeah, sure.
I know that Jim Toomey is working with Mike Hayes, our attorney, on the exact language of the easement itself, to make sure that it includes that we're paying for the relocation and all that. So, I talked to Mr. Toomey last night for just a minute at the end of the meeting, and he said that if you were going to take a vote before that language was complete, he suggested that your motion be to pass it with his final approval of the easement document.
Thank you, Mr. Bajorklan. I believe that's the motion that the board has in front of them already.
Motion?
Sure.
Move the board to second and approve the relocation of a 10-foot drainage easement at 50 Old Oak and Bucket Road and installation of a hydro, hydro, hydrodynamic stormwater treatment unit, precast manholes and concrete drain pipe to be installed by the contractor contingent upon approval of town council.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None? It passed unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. The next item is Kevin Kelly.
You sure?
Yep.
No, no, just, no, no, nothing to stop Kevin. But I just was, I just meant to just say something before we move on, after the library. I want everyone to keep in mind, all right, you know, we're talking about change orders here to a building that was built in '74, '75. Just wait for the junior high. You know, and that's what I meant, you know, they take walls out and stuff. Yes, yeah, the gates.
If we renovate gates.
If we did that.
That's right.
You don't know what you're getting.
Was the library a federal project, state project?
It was a federal project and virtually no cost to the town.
Want them building anything? The library?
Yes.
We're lucky there was no cost to the town.
But I mean, do they have their own inspectors and stuff? I mean, how does that work?
The code...
Doesn't apply.
I knew all this if Neil was here. The state building code, I don't know if it existed. It was completely...
It was literally almost brand-new.
Thank you, Kevin.
When they built the building.
So there was a lot of...
They didn't have snow loads.
There's a lot of grandfathering, right, to...
Yeah, and some of the things they did were not totally unusual, but in the spans that they did them and the loads that the building ended up having, a lot of things failed, slipped and moved over the years. We're actually fortunate that we didn't have anything happen over the years, looking at the conditions of it. And we saw, we did extensive walkthroughs in all the buildings last winter in snow loads, and we did shovel that roof, but we did not see any sagging in that particular building. So...
Okay, so you have a new roof to talk to us about?
Yes. I would like to ask the board to approve an award to replace the roof at the Sitchett Harbor Community Building to W P I Construction for $125,000. This is a contract to replace the entire roof, flat rubber, E P D M roofing, and asphalt shingle roofing, except for one section, which we've already replaced, and we phased that in so we wouldn't have to disturb that when we got to this part. I would like to do this before winter hits. That might be a little tricky with the building fully occupied and fully used, and weather conditions, and availability of the contractor, but we're talking about phasing now and how to do that, but right now, our goal is to try to get it done now.
So how are we going to pay for this? Do we have an insurance claim?
Mitigation.
The board approved replacement of this roof with the M B T A mitigation funds for up to $190,000, about 10 months ago.
I thought there was an insurance claim also.
See, that's taken care of already.
That was from Sandy.
Yeah.
That was, that was to replace the whole section that ripped off.
And that's the part that isn't being replaced now?
No, that's a separate piece.
Okay. So that's not being...
No, that is being taken off, taken off, because we touched nothing underneath. Basically, it peeled off like a banana, the rubber on the back, and we put down a new piece of rubber on top of that, just to secure it. We didn't touch anything underneath as far as the insulation, which all needs to be replaced and so forth. So this is all part of that.
So Kevin, I'm looking at, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the rendering showing the rooftop. The hash marks, is that the portion of the roof that will...
Actually, the hash marks are the, those are the portions that are being replaced, the dock area. There's one backside which is not to be replaced of the asphalt shingle.
Yeah, just, because here is the...
What's the age of that area that isn't being replaced, Kevin, approximately?
Oh, I don't know, it's 50 years old, maybe.
No, the area that's not being replaced.
Oh, that's not being replaced? Eight months, a year.
Oh, okay.
This section right here, this is all new asphalt shingle.
This right here, this portion?
And then this whole portion here is the portion that was lifted up during Sandy, and we re-hired, we put portions of it down and covered it with additional rubber.
Okay. So it's this section, these sections?
This is all new, this is all new, this is going to be all new.
This is all new, this is all new, this is going to be all new. And this down here also.
I know.
So it's just one small section that's not going to be new.
Well, it's new, it's eight months old.
Yeah, that's new enough. Just broken in.
But it's not going to be part of this contract, right?
Kevin, you say it's going to be a rubber roof?
Part of the rubber. On the flat section, yes.
Yep. And what's going to be on the?
Asphalt shingle. So we're basically replacing what's there with the same materials. Replacing asphalt shingle with asphalt shingle and rubber with rubber.
How many, is it a 25, 30 year, what on the asphalt?
I think it's 25. I can check that.
Kevin, if we can't get the asphalt shingles done real fast, I don't think you should do it.
Gets too cold, they're not going to stick.
Right.
And they're going to blow right out.
Right.
Then we'll be doing it next.
Agreed.
There were only two bids?
Yeah, 12 people pulled the specs and only two people actually bidded.
Everybody's so busy.
What'd you advertise it?
Central register, local papers. Yeah, we did everything. Decam certified, yeah, anything over $100,000.
And what's the alt bid?
To do a TCPO, TPO roofing, thermoplastic roofing as opposed to EPDM.
Okay.
What's the difference? I'll ask.
I could explain it, but I'm going to let him.
Yeah.
Good answer.
I'll be the girl on the board.
The TPO is, are the roofs that you see that are white roofs and their, their seams are welded seams and there's argument as to whether they're more environmentally friendly, so forth and so on, but the architect and most roofers don't approve that for a roof of this application in this area.
And I agree. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Just a little upsetting, there's only two, that's all, what are you going to do?
I know.
We were surprised because we had.
So you, 12 took out the bid and only two responded?
Only two responded.
Any local people at all, Kevin?
Everybody's busy.
Any local people at all?
No, no, because I, and I feel like that could be because of the Decam certification. I'm not sure of that, but I feel that could be part of the issue.
Question on another portion. Were the windows just went in where the freezer was, the refrigerator that was taken out? What's the plan? Because although it's been painted, it still looks pretty cruddy.
It does look pretty cruddy and have a contractor, a contract ready to be approved right now and he's eager to start that as soon as the beginning of next week and get that buttoned up.
Great, motion on the roof?
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen award a contractor to replace the roof at Situate Harbor Community Building, also formerly known as Pier 44, to WPI Construction Inc. of Fort Tanner Road, Webster, Mass. for a sum not greater than $125,000.
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Took a while, but we'll get that roof fixed. All right. Next on the agenda.
New business.
It's new business.
Looks like it's.
It is. Oh, wait, yeah, so we have a discussion vote for a wine and beer application? So want to make a motion for that?
I'll move to grant Alan McKenzie a one-day beer and wine license for an event to be held at the Situate Maritime Center on November 7th, 2015, from 6:30 PM until 10:30 PM.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
And I'll move to approve a renewal of a drain layers license to Jay Ialo Trucking.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. So we've got to go back to the liquor license motion that we made before. I guess there was a little technicality in the motion that we need to change, so let's vote to rescind. Actually, Trish, you want to explain?
Can you tell us what the technicality was?
So when Sean mentioned that when they usually approve full liquor licenses, there was a description of the premises. So I went and I checked the previous one and, and he is correct.
That's right.
So what I did is I went and I wrote a new motion for you, so in order to affect that, you need to rescind the previous vote.
I have a motion to rescind the previous vote.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move that Sean was right on the liquor license.
Pick that up a minute.
I move to approve a license to.
Expose.
Expose, huh? Expose. Keep. What? FN?
For sale.
Oh, for, what is it?
For sale.
Keep for sale. I can't read writing, God. You're like a doctor. For sale and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to Still Waters Wine, 366 Gannett Road, within an area of 800 square feet, retail location with additional 600 square feet store, storage area.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Trish. Let's go back to our discussion of the renovation of the library. So Ed, you went out and had a meeting with the?
We did. We had a quorum. The Public Building Commission met and reviewed the two proposed change orders for the demolition that we discussed earlier in the meeting and both change orders were approved unanimously by the Public Buildings Commission who recommended the work move forward as far as demo in the southwest wing of the building and the main trusses of the building.
Great, thank you. We have a motion here to, actually, we've got to do a couple of things. Let's make a motion to go forward with the demolition and we'll sign these change orders and then we should make another motion.
To endorse.
Endorsing the full replacement of the roof.
I'll make a motion. I'll move that, that move to accept or move to whatever, move to.
Approve.
Approve. PCO number 009, demo of the trustee, trusses for $45,360 and PCO number 006R, is that what it is?
Revised.
Yeah, revised. Demo of trusses, $32,928 amounting to some total of $78,288.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
And then I have a motion to vote to endorse the removal and replacement of the roof. Not to exceed, pending.
Pending further recommendation from the Public Building Commission.
Public Buildings, okay.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion?
No, yes.
Okay.
So I was going to have a question, but I'm a little, I was confused about the removal of the roof versus the trusses and all of that, that's all.
I'll talk for a second while you think. So essentially what we're doing here is we're saying we do not want to repair the broken roof that we have now. We want you to tear it down and build a new safe roof.
Right. You got it.
Great.
It's all going away and coming back. Okay.
All right, all good. Motion for that?
If, if they're going to sign it, and I don't know that it's required that they do, do we want to have them sign the one that Ed signed earlier?
For the 78 all in?
These are for the two demolitions.
Yeah, they can sign it after they adjourn.
We'll, we'll sign it later afterwards, Kevin.
You don't have to do it right this second.
Great. Great. Can I have a second for John's motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. Moving on to correspondence.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Joe.
So I don't.
They're good without the signatures anyway, they can start, right?
I don't think I need to sign it.
We're not holding them up by not signing.
Trish, do I need to sign this?
The change order?
Just below it, your signature?
Yeah, because it's over 78. It's over 50,000, so you're going to get audited on all this someday, so we're trying.
We'll just sign it right now.
Yep.
Yeah, there, we can get them going. Get on the phone and get them rolling.
Did you sign both of them?
To grin, right?
No, there's one underneath.
If the town doesn't pay toll, it's.
Two different amounts.
How do you spell Sean? S E?
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, they were very helpful today. I was there for a while.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Conrad.
And they like talking about that stuff.
Yeah, you bet. Have a great night, then.
Thanks, Joe.
Is there correspondence tonight?
There was.
Who's our clerk?
We have some great news. So we were, we received a notification from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, a letter to Trish that says it, writing officially to inform us that the state has designated Situate Harbor Cultural District by the Massachusetts Cultural Council on October 16th. So we joined 29 other districts in the Commonwealth that have achieved, achieved, sorry, I'm tired, cultural district designation. So congratulations to our cultural committee that came before us about a month or two ago and it gives us some great opportunity to further develop our, our district down there.
Did they spell Situate wrong on that originally?
I don't know.
When you, when I got the email across from you, it was, Situate was not spelled correctly.
I don't know.
Well, the one thing is.
It's spelled correctly here.
What's great is, does everybody know what the designation, the area is?
No.
Yes. It's huge. No, John.
It is from the Situate Brook, obviously because it's the founding name of the town, all the way down to the end of Front Street, wrapping around Jericho Road to the Lighthouse.
Isn't it?
It's a really nice area, you know, and it's, you know, you've got the Barker Tavern, you've got the Rebecca and Abigail Bates. It's phenomenal.
That's great.
So the, part of the agreement requests the town to chair the committee that's required to implement some of the recommendations and in the application, which you didn't see, that is me. So we'll be working, it's part of community support, it's a very important part of it, to get it off the ground. So that will be something we'll be reporting to you on.
This is fabulous news, it really is. I mean, 29 out of 351 towns, that tells you a lot.
Districts.
And, and plus their grants. They can grant, they can, the, this year, they're only able to give up to 5,000, but you know, this is going to hopefully mushroom into more to help do different things in our community, just like we did with the crosswalks. As small as it may seem, down in front of Rivas, you know, painting it and doing different things, there are just subtle things that can be done that'll just, just makes the town cooler.
And you know, it reminds me of probably about 15 years ago, Susan Fitton started this whole thing by getting, you know, designation errors and try and get federal grants to help improve cemeteries and different things in town and, you know, it's nice to see that, that all that work has paid off and we're moving down that direction, so. There's another correspondence.
We have another letter, yes.
Do you want me to read it because I know you're a little.
No, I'm fine.
A little hoarse.
I'm fine. "On behalf of the Situate American Legion Post 144, you are cordially invited to join our post members, Situate veterans at large and their guests on November 11th, 2015 at our annual Veterans Day Ceremony and Dinner. So the place, the event will take place at 11:00 AM at the Situate Country Club and a dinner will follow the ceremony, which will also take place at the Situate Country Club and this was on behalf of the post commander of the American Legion Post, so for Veterans Day."
Great, is that on Monday?
It's a new location, isn't it?
The 11th is Wednesday.
Especially at the GAR Hall, right?
Yes, it is.
So a Wednesday at 11:00 AM?
Yes.
Veterans Day.
It's Veterans Day.
Great.
So, yeah, someone, if you can tell Lorraine so she can.
What time? 11? It's at 11, yeah.
I thought it was later, okay.
No, it's 11. That's when the first world war ended, Armistice Day, which is the start of the whole Veterans Day. So war ended at 11 on November 11th.
Really?
So that's the reason why it's 11.
Great.
Another history factoid. I'm full of them tonight, folks.
Go, Norm. Great, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of executive session of 6:28:14?
So moved.
Second by?
Second.
Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain.
That's four, zero with one abstention. And we are now going to join, well, actually, any comments, any new business from, from the Board? Marty, anything?
Well, just, I mean, I, we've got to make it public, there will not be, as of right now, there is no St. Patrick's Parade. The Chamber of Commerce has pulled the plug on having the parade. So I mean, that's, as of right now, there is no St. Patrick's Parade in Situate.
Great, well, that's much advanced notice, so maybe someone will pick up the ball and run with it.
Well, normally the fundraising and all that's already happening. There's a little spin, but Ed Kelly was willing to do it, it's just that the chambers decided that it doesn't do anything to benefit their businesses, so they feel like it's unfair to the businesses.
Hmm.
So that's the end of that.
Maybe Ruth will write a story about it and get some public support.
The most Irish town in America.
I know, I know. First news. The motions are different because we're in the executive session.
Here's another one.
So they can do a second motion to the executive session and vote not to release.
For that same day?
All right, so I'll, I'll withdraw my, move to rescind my motion.
No, no, you're fine.
Just another motion?
Do another motion to accept the executive session once for the same date.
All right, so I'll move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for June 28, 2014, since the matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye abstain.
And one abstention, and you know what, when I made the motion that you agreed to, I just said executive session, so let's make a motion to pass the minutes of that meeting as well.
I'll go back and say that. I'll move the Board of Selectmen approve the meeting minutes from June 28, 2014. Board of Selectmen Retreat Meeting.
Second by?
Second.
Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will stop then.
So three.
That's three to zero.
Twindrick was here. Or was he?
Yeah.
It's my more stay.
Great. Great, any other, John, any business?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm all set.
Maura?
I just wanted to highlight one thing from last night, and it's a positive thing that I think we kind of overlooked just because the question came before us, and that is that the town, through Nancy and Kevin's work, received a CZM grant to do a huge analysis on our whole coast, you know, done by scientists to understand the impacts of the entire coast,